All right, good evening, everybody. It is May 24th, 2018, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. First item would be the pledge to our flag. Linda, would you lead us?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrell. For the record, we have all seven councilmembers with us this evening, so that is wonderful. First item on our agenda tonight is the consent items, which includes an agenda that needs some revision, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and a couple of housekeeping resolutions.
So, Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions of Item A, or, excuse me, Item I, which is an improvement agreement for a view deal short subdivision SS-17-01 WE, and Item J, which is a lease amendment for the Parkside, extending the term out to 40 years, and approving the vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. And then, do we want to keep these as the same?
Yep, yep, those are both consent items.
So, as part of that, we're also going to approve Resolution 2018-20, confirming the mayoral appointment of Rob Jammerman to the position of Director of Public Works, and also Resolution Number 2018-21, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee and authorizing the Department of Information Systems to dispose of the personal property identified herein.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve the vouchers and minutes from their previous meetings, the agenda with the additions of Items I and J, and Resolution 2018-20, confirming Rob Jammerman to the position of Director of Public Works, and Resolution 2018-21, declaring certain property surplus to the needs of the city. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for bearing with us on those two additional items. Next up would be citizen comment. If any member of the audience would like to address the council on any items that aren't on this evening's agenda, we'd ask you to come up and give us your name and address, and we'll give you about three minutes or so. The notetakers. We have four presentations tonight. We have some special recognition, Water Safety Month, Historic Preservation Month, and then the Memorial Day Proclamation. So, the first is some special recognition. So, Allison, I will give you the floor.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. We just wanted to take a few minutes and recognize some quick action that was taken on last Friday night. And so, Captain Reinfield is here. We have Gabriel and Erin. Kelly, if you want to come up. We had our buildings quickly rescued from an incident last Friday, and so Captain Reinfield can describe, and we just wanted to recognize the quick action of Gabriel and Erin in taking care of that.
Thank you. Mayor Coontz and members of the council, on Friday night, last Friday night on the 17th, at about 6:20 in the evening, we had somebody decide they were very dissatisfied with some of our buildings and one of our patrol cars, and smashed out the windows and the front door of the old police station next door here at 135 South Shalane, which of course houses other operations now, went down into our parking garage and destroyed three of the six windows in one of our patrol cars and damaged two others, and then headed down to the main station at this time and knocked out both of our front outer doors. Thankfully, she did not compromise the building. Now, the reason that Gabriel and Erin are standing here, it could have been a lot worse. Erin's crew responded immediately in the aftermath and got everything boarded up, and we didn't lose any time with any operations except for our patrol car. The other hand, though, for Gabriel, who's standing behind me right now, Gabriel acted very quickly. When another member of the cleaning crew the city contracts with recognized the windows were being broken out of the old police station, she called Gabriel. Gabriel was working here in City Hall, stepped out and actually confronted this woman who had a large bar of metal from a truck suspension component and probably kept her from damaging City Hall. When she fled from here, he followed to a safe distance, called 911, was able to communicate to Rivercom, and Rivercom able to communicate to our officers to intercept her as she was leaving the front doors of the station after trashing it. Without having this, without getting this report, she easily could have continued through the parking lot, damaged personal vehicles belonging to city employees, continued to the YMCA parking lot, and damaged vehicles that belonged to really anyone who was working out or continuing anywhere through the city, continuing to do more damage. Because of Gabriel's quick actions, that did not happen. And so, that's what this recognition moment about is for Gabriel and the other members of D and B who take care of our buildings and take care of the city.
Great. Well, thanks, Edgar. We see him a lot around here working at night, so we're leaving and he's in here doing the work. So, thank you for doing that and doing the right thing. And Erin, thanks for your staff. They come in and plug up the buildings overnight.
Jeff and I.
Yeah, that's great. So, appreciate all you guys, and thanks for looking out for us. They must have been after the IT guys for some reason, right? Starting over there. It'd be the old police station, right? The guard computer guys. Well, thanks, everybody. Next is Water Safety Month proclamation. Who's got the Water Safety Month proclamation?
I do, Mayor.
Councilmember Poyer.
Whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in good physical and mental health and enhance quality of life, and whereas there are a variety of aquatic facilities and programs in the community that are available to residents ranging from swimming areas on the Columbia River to public and private swimming pools, whereas the city provides aquatic programs and activities that provide opportunities to participants to learn and grow, increase personal safety, and build self-esteem, confidence, and sense of self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in the community. And whereas, through these aquatic programs and facilities, it is vitally important to communicate information about water safety to families and individuals of all ages, since water safety education helps to prevent drownings and recreational water-related injuries. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Water Safety Month, and the city of Wenatchee encourage all residents to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 24th day of May 2018. Frank Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Kami and Gracie, how you doing?
Thank you. It's an honor to receive this. Thank you, thank you. Come on, Gracie.
Pictures taken first, you can hand stuff out when you're done.
Oh, I was just going to say a little bit about our drawing.
Okay, well, you need a microphone. Here we go. Thought when you were sitting down, you were going to say something with a microphone.
Well, this is an honor to receive this, being able to provide a lot of the programs for our youth. It's just a rewarding experience. And with me, I have Gracie, this year's Assistant Manager. Gracie will be in charge of scheduling, as well as lifeguarding, swimming lessons, supporting with our front desk personnel. And just a reminder that swimming lessons registrations will start June 14th, and the opening for public swim starts June 16th at 1:00.
Perfect. Thank you. Picture taken. Thank you for being here. All right, Historic Preservation Month. Who's got Historic Preservation Month?
I have that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Markhart.
Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Historic Preservation Month. In the city of Wenatchee, and urge all people in our community to join me in recognizing historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage, and the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 24th day of May 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Markhart. And I don't see Kirsten Larson or any of our planning staff. Oh, Steven's here. I will make sure this gets delivered to the historic board in their next meeting as well. Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, Memorial Day Proclamation. Do we have that out here somewhere?
I have that.
You have that? Councilmember Kulas.
Whereas, since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has, on occasion, been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution, and whereas, at times, it became necessary to resort to armed conflict to protect these concepts, which give each citizen of the United States certain inalienable rights, and whereas, citizens of our great country have given of their lives in the protection of these unalienable rights, and whereas, each year we set aside one day to which we can revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 28, 2018, as Memorial Day in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honoring their memory. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed this 24th day of May 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. And I will read that at the Memorial Day event at the Wenatchee Cemetery at 9:00 AM on Monday, and then the Black Bridge. Mayor Lacy and I meet halfway, and we drop a wreath, and then 11:00 at the East Wenatchee Cemetery. And I believe Pibus Market is doing something at noon.
At noon.
So, any of those ones. I will be at the Wenatchee Cemetery at 9:00, and I will be at the bridge dedication at 10:00. So, hopefully, see you all there. Action items. We have a number of them this evening. First action item today is regarding a contract with our Wenatchee Police Guild. So, Chief Captain Carey, who's coming up? All right, how we doing?
Good evening, Mayor.
Brian Chance with us, okay.
City council members. For the record, I'm Steve Crown. To my left, to your right, is Brian Chance, Sergeant, and also Police Guild President. The issue before you, pleased to present the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the Wenatchee Police Guild, period starting January 1st, 2018, and running through December 31st, 2020. The request is that the city council provide Mayor Coontz with the authorization to sign the contract. This contract has been discussed this afternoon at the Finance Committee, and all the financial impacts were discussed at that meeting. Happy to either Brian or I to answer any questions if you have regarding the contract.
Just a comment before any questions, if there are any. We held a guild meeting, a general membership meeting, and this contract has been ratified by the Guild as well.
Thank you. And I have to think from a big picture, 30,000-foot level, you know, we're trying to stay competitive with our neighboring city for one and the other region as well. I think the East Wenatchee folks got three and a half or four straight consecutive years. That's sort of be what the rate, going rate is at this time. The other sorts of additions, SWAT and some of those things are pretty small. In terms of the current budget, we budgeted, you know, 2.25, so the current year budget is not a meaningful change one way or the other, and we budgeted for 41 officers. We're running about 38 right now. We'll get to 40 soon. So, I think for this year's budget, it really is probably not much of an impact. Once you get to full staffing and you start putting the four on top of the four, it does become an impact, and obviously, they're going to get, you know, two and a half or three anyhow, so it's really kind of playing on the fringes of the rest of that. So, I really thought it was the right thing to do. Staff worked really, really hard. This was a tough negotiation at the start, got way easier at the end. So, I think from staff's perspective and from my office, I think it's a good resolution, and we're excited to get this put behind us. Any questions for the chief or for Sergeant Chance or myself?
Sergeant Chance, like, I'm curious on how long was the negotiations?
Geez, chief, you're going to have to help me out on the timeline. Number of complete days, I'd say we probably spent eight days, roughly.
Eight or nine, yeah.
We had, as the mayor kind of alluded to, it started out a little rough, but, you know, it's a contract negotiation where both sides have some pretty deep-rooted interest in a favorable outcome for their side, but also understanding that to get movement, we're going to have to give a little on both sides, too. So, once we both had teams together that we felt were going to be productive, it was really quite smooth, I would say, and every day was very productive, and we maximized the use of the time that we had, and I think we met four or five complete days following those initial few that weren't quite as productive. But again, getting these things off the ground and getting them rolling are sometimes difficult. So, but we were successful, and both sides, my understanding conversation I've had with Chief Crown and the captains and my team and the Guild membership, everybody's very pleased with where we landed, so.
Thank you.
And these things go on for a while. I think we probably had, you guys had the first meeting, what, October, November-ish?
August.
August, and kind of got it wrapped up in May-ish, you know, so first part of May, last of April in terms of, so it's, these things take time.
Yeah.
And a lot of effort and energy by your staff, and then, of course, the union folks as well. All right, any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement 2018-2020 with the Wenatchee Police Guild.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harrell, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the collective bargaining agreement for 2018 through 2020 with Wenatchee Police Guild. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I heard a rumor that Mr. Chance is going to be leaving, and he's excited to get this signed. Is that correct?
It'd be great to get it signed.
Thank you very much.
Where's Brian going? Where's Brian going?
Next item is regarding an inter-local agreement with Shalane County PUD for efficient LED lighting.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Owen, city engineer. I'm happy to bring to you tonight this agreement between the city and the PUD. It represents a lot of work that staff at Public Works has been doing since, well, actually for several years going now, especially since the middle of last year with the PUD. They're very close to advertising a project. I don't know if you got a chance to look through that big public information packet that I included in your agenda, but about 3,700 lights throughout the county, street lights and area lights. And the city of Wenatchee, the lights in the city of Wenatchee represent somewhere around 62% of the total lights countywide that they're going to be replacing. The most, most of those are owned and maintained by us, and another 600 or so are maintained by the PUD. So, this is, it's been a long time in coming since 2014, when this first started getting talked about, and PUD's got a lot of people involved in gears and wheels, and this agreement basically just kind of lays things out so that we've got the necessary, oh, legal provisions and that in place for them to have a contractor do this work in our city. It's going to result in darker skies and brighter streets at the same time.
So, the big picture is, they're going to go convert all these LED, all these lights to LED lights. They're going to pay for it all, and we'll get a lesser utility bill because it'll be cheaper power.
Well, I hope it'll be a lesser bill.
But that's the kind of the concept.
That's the concept. They kind of raised the rates on the flat rate, single features, to make up for the fact that they hadn't raised it, I think, for 10 years. But the electric rates that we'll be paying on all of our metered lights, which is the majority of them, will be down significantly. So, I like to think it'll create some more budget, maybe for some additional lighting in the city.
Okay. Questions, councilmembers?
So, Gary, they, I mean, they had several pictures of what the lights are going to look like, but I know in the past, when we've done a couple LED lights specifically on Fifth Street, there ended up being a large box that ended up down on the ground to control those. Is this going to be the same situation, or is this a direct head replacement and the power supply conversion is up in the head? And do you know the answer to that?
Well, the big box on Fifth, are you referring to the one on the southerly side of the road up near the PUD substation? That was an upgrade to the, that we did with that project to the circuitry, so that because we had a substandard service for that, for that circuit, for that whole mile of, well, not the whole mile, but about half that mile of lights up there. And we've got the same, we're not going to be replacing any services, but our guys have been out working and putting off some of their, some of their regular routine maintenance signal and lighting to bring a number of our circuits up to code so that the LNI will allow this to happen. We've still got a lot of old systems out there that don't meet current codes, current codes in a number of ways. So, I expect when they go out to bid, we'll still have between 50 and 100 lights total in the city that may not, the LNI may not allow that retrofit to happen, but we're, our goal is to get it so we get them, we get them all. But there, no, to answer your question, there's not going to be any more big service cabinets associated with the.
Additional ones. There might be some upgrades to existing ones, but no more additional ones.
Yeah. The upgrades that you see are either going to be in the boxes in the ground or in the boxes that are already there associated with the systems. And it's set up so the contractor's going to have the ability to choose from three or four different heads, and we stayed consistent with mostly DOT standards and specs. We worked on lighting levels, colors, all of that. A lot of that we relied on the PUD and the public process that they went through, you know, they installed a number of them up by Washington Park a few years ago and got public feedback on that. So, hopefully, if we get complaints, they'll take care of most of those for us, too, but I expect that not everybody will be happy. But I think most people will be, and I'd love to be able to get like a satellite shot at night before and after so we could really show how we're basically a better, darker-sky city afterward.
Good. What I'm excited for. Planning on doing installations over the next year or two?
It'll all happen this summer.
Okay.
It should be complete by September, October.
Pretty aggressive schedule.
Any other questions for Gary?
Yeah, Gary, in our packet, there's a letter from, I don't know how you pronounce it, Tanco Lighting. Are they the contractor that's going to be doing that? There's a reference to city, Waylanders, I don't know where that is, but I'm assuming that that letter's included because they're going to be the contractor installing.
Tanco is the consultant that the PUD hired a couple of years ago to go through the countywide analysis and basically put together the contract plans.
So, they're not doing the work.
No, they will, they'll be advertising the project for bids, I would expect, here in the next week or two. And they have agreements similar to this one with the other small cities, Kashmir, Innyatt, Shalane, and the state of Washington DOT.
Any other questions for Gary? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve the inter-local agreement Number 18-045 for efficient lighting improvements with the Shalane County PUD and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza, to approve inter-local agreement Number 18-045 and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement with Shalane County PUD. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Item C, disclosure procedures. This is exciting stuff.
Hang on to your seats.
Here we go.
Mayor, Council, Brad Postenjack, Finance Director. In 2012, our bond legal counsel asked the city, or recommended that the city adopt disclosure controls and procedures. These procedures guide how we gather our data and disclose our financial information to investors who have purchased or who are anticipating purchasing bonds that have been issued by the city. So, most recently, as we're getting ready to issue our sewer revenue bonds in the next month, our, again, our bond legal counsel came to us and recommended that we simplify these procedures. The old procedures that were adopted in 2012 were very onerous and detailed, and so they recommended we simplify them just to make things a little bit easier and less onerous on staff and our bond counsel, and hopefully ends up saving us time and money that we would otherwise spend for our legal counsel. So, it's mostly an administrative procedure that we need to adopt, so if you have any questions.
Yeah, again, this is something that Roy Colgan asked that we change. I think, big picture, because we have these bonds, a number of city bonds, there's these things called Emma postings, which Emma's the website that you go to if you want to see anything. That's where investors go. So, we have to have, what's the right, when do you have to post to Emma? When our audits are done, when we do additional debt financing? So, this is sort of, helps with the checklist of stuff to make sure our continuing disclosures are appropriate.
I make a motion for the city council to approve Resolution Number 2018-22, repealing Resolution Number 2012-10 and adopting revised continuing disclosure procedures.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt Resolution 2018-22, repealing Resolution 2012-10 and adopting a revised continuing disclosure procedures. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad. Just for the rest of the council, FYI, Deanne McDaniel's last day was today. She is officially retired. Had a little retirement celebration for her yesterday. She came to Finance Committee today. We made her come with her retirement shirt on. So, been a really nice couple of days saying goodbye to Deanne. She was a pretty remarkable city employee for a long time, and so, get a chance to see her around, tell her thank you.
We had yeoman service when we're going through some tough times.
Yeah.
Really stepped up to the beat.
And I haven't seen her smile this wide in a long time. She's pretty darn excited. All right, so, item B, Old Station Sanitary Sewer. Jeremy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here in regards to the Old Station Sewer project. As you are aware, we're extending sewer services up into Sunny Slope. There's a significant amount of construction that's going to be going on, and we need to have some inspection services for that construction. It's going to be a greatly compressed schedule, and there's not any realistic way that we can perform the inspection services in-house. So, RH2 Engineering was the consultant that did the design on the project and have been assisting us throughout the whole process, and so it makes the most sense to hire them to continue on with the inspection of the project. So, I'm here to request that the council authorize the mayor to sign the consultant supplement agreement Number 2 on behalf of the city with RH2 Engineering for the services during construction for the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Phase 1, Project 1718.
So, Jeremy, is this a case where they will do those inspections internally, or will they sub out those inspections to another contractor?
They will have two members of their internal staff on site pretty much the whole time during construction. There will be a little bit of subbing materials out, materials testing out to one of the local firms, so they'll have somebody come in, test the compaction, pole gradation samples, that type of thing, test the asphalt when it's placed, basically meet all the DOT specs for the work that's being done up on US 297 in that area, as well as the compaction for the trenches and everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a clarification question.
I have a clarification question. Um, I was wondering what the original, uh, budget was set at for this.
The original budget was at nine, $9,390,000 for the entire project.
Okay, but for this specific phase, and the reason why I'm asking is because it says that, um, that the design contract amount was increased by $597,489. But we're not having a, um, impact on this project.
The to- the total project, um, there are expenditures for design, for construction services as well, and the.
So it doesn't take us above it? Is that what we're saying here?
No, if, if, if you look at the construction engineering, it, it makes a difference of about $27,000. If you look, there's a construction engineering line item on there for $570,000. RH2's contract is $597,000. So this is another aspect to the entire project cost. It's a supplement to RH2's contract, their design contract, so it is extending that contract amount, but it is within the budgeted amount for the design and construction services.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With the exception of the $27,000. And we are nowhere near their total expenditure for the original contract either. So we should theoretically be a little bit under budget at this point.
So Jeremy, I will just say in general, I am fine with this agreement. Uh, if I had a choice on who would be inspecting the contractor's work, my first choice would be a city employee. My second choice would be a contractor who's not the design engineer, and my third choice would be the design engineer. I understand that this is going, I'm fine with it, but just kind of going forward, I really like our people, one, someone who wasn't involved in this project in any way, shape, or form, two, and then the actual design consultants, third. That's just a personal preference of mine. So going forward, if we can find a city employee, I'd love that. If we can find a consultant who isn't the person who designed it, because sometimes there's one of those, uh, that would be my choice. I'm fine with this. It's well within budget. I know we're in a hurry, but just going forward, those are my preferences. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign consultant agreement number two on behalf of the city with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for services during construction for the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase One, project number 1718.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor to sign consultant agreement number two on behalf of the city with RH2 Engineering for construction services for the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks for your work on this. This is great getting this. I heard they're starting the first week in June?
Yep. The current plan is for them to start on June 4th. And so we'll have, uh, the, one of the subcontractors out doing the trenchless boring, um, underneath the, the state highways first. So we'll start right over there at, uh, 285, um, next to the Old Station off ramp. And the second one they'll be doing, um, across US 2 at school, and they should have that wrapped up relatively quickly. Um, that's going to be the first thing that they do is install the casings.
Good. Be fun to see stuff going on up there. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right. North Miller Storm Drain. Who's doing that? Is that you again?
That's me again. And Rob too, if he wants to comment. Okay. Okay, so, um, this agenda item is to help us with the North Miller Storm Drain Replacement Project. We have, uh, 48-inch pipe, combination 42-inch, 48-inch pipe that, um, some of you may recall has collapsed a couple of times and it's, um, caused some significant impact to traffic over the last, I'll call it about six, seven years. DOT is coming through and doing a paver project in this area, um, all up and down mission. They're going to be going, uh, up past the bridge to Old Station. And we need to get this piece of pipe replaced in advance of their paving project. Last thing we want is for it to fall apart two years from now. So in order to get this project done, um, we brought, uh, before the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, um, first the proposal to get approximately $50,000 allocated to get a consultant onboard and provide the quick design that was necessary. Um, that was done. SCJ has completed the project design documents. It was advertised, uh, day before yesterday, I believe it was. Um, we will be opening bids hopefully in the next two weeks, so, um, and getting good bids hopefully. So this is just basically to formalize the budget amendment associated with that contract.
I didn't see it. What's the projected amount?
I'm sorry?
What's the projected amount of the?
Uh, let's see, I don't think I had the final cut. Yeah, $357,201 based on the engineer's estimate.
Thank you.
And that's for approximately 500 feet of pipe under Miller.
Uh, that was my question. It looked like originally they were thinking 1,600 feet, but while we have it open, does it make sense to replace as much as we can?
We sent a camera up the main line. Um, we've done it a couple of times and the section that we thought was bad, the pipe is actually in relatively decent condition. Um, we saw where the failures had happened in 2011 and some other ones that were a little bit more recent than that. Um, we saw a bunch of failures of the liner, but the section upstream of what we've identified was actually in decent condition. So we decided that it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to replace that much extra pipe.
And there's a limit on the crossing that keeps us down to 48 inches? Where's that crossing at?
There's a sewer crossing, um, that's right near Taco Bell. Um, and the elevation of that sewer is such, such that we can't really change anything. I'm sorry, if I, I can't hear out of one of these ears right now. Um, the, uh, the elevation of the sewer crossing pretty much limits where the grade's at. So we're basically going to be replacing everything in kind, um, with a little bit of an upsize of a section of the pipe.
I see. So it is a 48-inch now?
It's a combination of a 42-inch and a 48-inch. It transitions within this project zone.
And we had thought about going to a 60 just for future and?
Downstream, as you get towards the Stamilte property on the other side of the avenue, it is a 60-inch. So we were looking at it from the standpoint of a long-term capacity increase, um, but absent rebuilding the entire sewer system in that area, um, we can't really do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jeremy? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the budget adjustment and direct staff to complete the design and bid the project, project number 1803.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the budget adjustment and direct staff to complete design and bid the project, project number 1803, the Miller Street Storm Drain Project. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Steven, are we going to do the repeal of the Capital Facility Plan Amendment we did a month or so ago?
Just about two months ago. So that was March 22nd, uh, you adopted, uh, resolution, uh, 2814 that amended, uh, the Capital Facility Plan. Uh, you may recall at that meeting, Councilmember Kulas had a very pointed question about the number of times we can, uh, update our comprehensive plan and, and looking at what we have coming up, the housing update and other, um, projects that may need to amend the comprehensive plan, uh, we are recommending that you repeal that ordinance, uh, and then we can simply wrap those changes into that annual update, uh, at a later time this year. So we have proposed, uh, for you, uh, resolution 2018, 16, which would repeal that earlier ordinance, um, and, uh, happy to answer any questions that you have.
And the issue, the reason why we were doing the Capital Facility Plan, uh, the specific issue has kind of gone away.
That's correct.
So there's, was really at that, there's, there's no need to have it, even the things we did then. So it's kind of, uh, we're better off just to repeal it and continue on.
Yep. That's correct.
Kind of going to be my question, I guess, is, you know, by doing that, there, this doesn't affect or has no effect or there's, there's not projects to launch on something based on what we passed with?
No, this. No, this, so the real, earlier amendment or, uh, was really a procedural action. Uh, the Capital Facilities Plan already recognizes the Transportation Improvement Plan as a component of it. It simply added a new date, uh, in that, um, it was at the request of the Association of Washington City's Legal Counsel. And as the mayor said, the, the issue that precipitated that is really, uh, a non-issue anymore.
All right. Any other questions for Steven? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I take a motion to approve resolution number 2018 dash 16, repealing prior resolution number 2018 14, uh, that adopted amendments to the City of Anantia Capital Facility Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Markhart, to approve resolution 2018 dash 16, repealing prior resolution 2018 14 that adopted the amendments to the City of Anantia Capital Facility Plan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steven. All right. Next item in our agenda is regarding the federal building purchase and sale agreement and looks like one, two, three, four, five, and perhaps even six motions. So got our folks from Localtel here and Steve and Steve and all kinds of folks. Shall we start with our two Steves?
Sure.
Okay. It's all yours.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, uh, Economic Development Director.
Steve Smith, City Attorney.
John Seaback, Localtel Communications.
Greg Mercer, Localtel.
Dimitri, Localtel.
Well, we're happy to be here. It's been a, it's been a long, uh, long road with working through, uh, the federal building purchase effort. Um, these guys have all been great to work with. I'd like to also recognize a few members of our city team, Dale Cantrell, Aaron Kelly, Brad Posenjack, and Glenn, director team that's helped out quite a bit in getting through this, getting through this process. And so about a month ago, you, um, the city, uh, passed or authorized a purchase and sale agreement for $3.6 million to buy three, uh, proposed units on the federal building, in the federal building. And in that purchase and sale agreement, there's a, there was a contingency that several documents were authorized by the city council prior to closing. So that's what your council packet has is, uh, basically condominium declarations, a management agreement, construction agreement, a right of first negotiation, and then there's also a, uh, addendum to the purchase and sale agreement for a post-closing obligation for working on some of the, uh, street permit requirements on Shalane Avenue. So in just, you know, we worked, went through most of this in work session last week. I just wanted to highlight, um, you know, a couple of the financial impacts. We didn't talk a lot about the financial, uh, details last meeting. We talked more about the logistics, the condo declarations. So I wanted to give you an overview of the financial impacts and then open it up for questions for all of us, um, to, uh, before your, before your decision. Um, in terms of financial impacts, you'll recall that the budget for this project is, um, 14 and a half million dollars, which includes the purchase and a fairly substantial remodel anticipated in 2020. That, um, that budget includes a million and a half dollars of contingency, which is appropriate at this point in the, in the, uh, development process. We have architects onboard, ARC architects, which has helped us go through the due diligence of the building. One thing I will tell you is over the last year, we have really learned a lot about the building. Localtel has been awesome about helping us understand the building systems, helping our architects understand it. We've scoured, it seems like a thousand sheets of the old plans, really have a good, uh, understanding of the building, the building system. So we, we have a good feeling of what we're getting into in terms of our anticipated costs and feel that that budget, uh, number allows us to upgrade the systems that need to be upgraded and also utilize the systems that are in good shape and continue to use the, um, the asset that is there today. So, um, so we're very comfortable there. We will be also, as part of, uh, actions that just follow, that these are, uh, documents authorized, will be, um, establishing a reserve fund for unexpected, um, system repairs like elevators. And so we will build, um, a reserve fund initially by, uh, each of us dedicating $30,000 per unit to capitalize, create a $150,000 reserve fund. And then we will contribute eight cents a square foot, uh, per month to build that reserve fund to a target level of $400,000. And so that's, that's the objective of, of having some, uh, backup reserves for that building of, of that size. We also have done an analysis on, uh, what the, the building will cost the city in, for terms of operation and maintenance in the first two years. Um, the management agreement that's in your packet, it will establish that Localtel will continue to operate the building just as they are doing today. So right now, there's tenants in the building, leases are collected, those leases will be assigned to the city, but ultimately it goes right back into the building to pay for operation and maintenance expenses. By the time you add the reserves and those operation and maintenance expenses, it's just under $260,000 a year, uh, is the, is the cost of the city. And the rents right now are right around $247,000 a year. So I think the cost would be $10,000 a year for us in terms of operation for this, uh, next two or three years while we're waiting for the big improvements. The net cost impact to the City General Fund after debt is issued, um, subtracting out the revenue potential is estimated at approximately $530,000 a year. So, um, that's, that's the, the, the gross financial picture. Um, still, as when we originally started talking about this building, it's actually pretty darn close to where we anticipated a couple of years ago. And, uh, in, in, my comfort level is a whole lot better and, uh, and see a, see optimism going forward in terms of even doing better than some of these, uh, financial projections. So, um, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Um, I know we have, Steve, do you want to cover just, uh, there's a few minor edits that need to be made in these documents? You want to cover what those?
Sure. Um, yeah, so since we gave these documents to you last week, we've continued to read over them just to make sure we pick up the edits and, uh, formatting and various issues. You probably noticed a few typos here and there, so we've tried to clean those up. There were four items that were a little more than a typo or a gra- you know, grammatical thing that I wanted to point out. Um, first, in, in the declaration, um, there was a provision in section 23.1.2 that said it would be the association's responsibility to ensure fixtures and equipment in each individual unit. Well, that, that won't actually be the condominium association's responsibility. Each party or each owner will be responsible to ensure their own stuff in their unit. So we, we deleted that language from the, from the contract. In the addendum to the purchase and sale agreement, the key provision, the, the change to the, to the purchase and sale agreement, the grammar needed some help. There were a couple of extra words and a run-on sentence without a period, so we fixed that today. So the, the text doesn't really change other than we deleted a word, so, um, not a, not a real big deal. In the management agreement, um, you might have noticed this, but in paragraph one, it provided that, um, the city would pay Localtel $1,200 per year for their management, uh, fee. But then in the budget, it provided for $1,200 per month. And so it was actually intended that it be $1,200 per month to, to your benefit. So we're going to, we're going to fix that, yeah. We're going to fix that language, um, because the intent was $1,200 per month. And then in paragraph 11, there was a, an insurance provision that was added, um, by Peter Sidoni last week, and it's fine. It's a pretty typical insurance provision that you typically see in a contract for private parties, um, provides for minimum levels of insurance of at least $2 million. Uh, that's all fine, but the city doesn't have the typical type of insurance. We don't have commercial lines of insurance. We're self-insured through the AWC risk pool. And so, um, we don't have the exact types of coverages that that provision provided. Um, we also can't name another party as an additional insured on our insurance program. Um, so I a- added some language just today, in fact, to just say, uh, alternatively, the city can provide insurance through its self-insurance risk pool. So that language will stay that was already in there, but, but we've got an alternative provision that will provide insurance through the risk pool and that we won't add anybody as a additional insured. But we're more than adequately insured, you know, we've got way more than $2 million per occurrence, so. So those were the only substantive changes. Remarkably, I thought the, the documents are in good shape, I think. There are a few typos here and there that we'll clean up and, you know, you might have spotted, but.
I, I thought it was a very thorough contract, so kudos to.
I, I thought it was a very thorough contract, so kudos to you, Steve.
Well, it wasn't just me. There've been a lot of ayes, for sure, and Steve, Steve King's done a lot of work.
And just for clarification, there's five separate motions on our list of, is, do we want to add a six to extend the purchase and sale closing date? Because I know we're getting close up to that, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'd, I'd like to request that an additional motion be added or action be action that would authorize the mayor to sign an extension to the purchase and sale agreement. It, for June 15th, it actually runs out on May 31st. And I think we're gonna get closed by May 31st, but there's a whole lot of logistical paperwork that has to happen. And so we don't want to run out on, have that purchase and sale agreement expire just because we're, we've got to get all the Mylar signed, the deeds created, all that paperwork has to get done. And so we, we don't have a council meeting between now and May 31st, so we wanted to give that mayor that option if it's necessary.
All right, Dmitry, Greg, John, you guys want to say anything before we ask the city council has any questions?
Well, it's been nine months of negotiation, and it's actually been a very interesting experience for me. I've never done this before, and Steve and Steve are just great to work with. I couldn't, they, it just couldn't have been better to work with them, and they stood their crap and got what they wanted. And we got what we wanted, and I think we have a good agreement, and we're, I think we're all pretty pleased with how far we came in these nine months. Had I known that nine months ago? That it's that hard to do it, but we, we went through about every square foot of that building and figured out who should have it, what's the best, is it joint, is it ours, is it yours? Who's gonna heat it, who's gonna cool it, who's gonna clean it? It was an interesting process, so I'm happy to be almost done.
Council, have you got any questions for any of our staff members? I know for those listening at home, we've been dealing with this, not in the detail that you have, for nine months, but we've been talking about it for a year, so this is a culmination of, I know, a lot of work from our staffs, so. Questions, comments, before we start knocking out some motions?
I guess the only comment I'd like to make is that, you know, nine months earlier ago, when this all came up and we started talking about it, I had a lot of trepidation about launching into something of that size and, you know, it's kind of like buying an aircraft carrier. And so as time has gone on, and particularly, you know, this thing has kind of come down to the closing here, in this, you know, all of these different agreements and whatever, and the detail that's in there, I can honestly say I feel a lot better. It's, it's still, you know, we're still biting off a pretty good, pretty good chunk of operations here, but, but I think the, the detail that we have there and, and these various agreements create a situation where I think, you know, things can be worked out and makes for, there's going, there's going to be things going to happen.
Yeah.
But, but I think we have a process in place to make that all work. I'm very glad to see the, where we, where we started, where we, where we ended up here.
Yeah, and I think, and I think just from Steve's work and the fact that we hired people to go and look at all the systems and give us a system evaluation, looked at all the electrical, all the stuff that we were scared to death about when we were bidding, right? We have, we're still scared a little bit, but not near like we were before, right? And we know how much it costs to operate the building, we know how much it costs to landscape, we know, so there's a certain comfort level that comes with all of that because of what Localtel has done. And, yeah, we're paying a slight premium over, but it's the right thing to do in terms of the knowledge that we've gained, and it's an absolute fantastic business deal for the city in terms of the amount of square footage we're getting for the costs that we're paying. It really is a tremendous deal.
You know, I just have to say, I feel very confident that this is going to be an excellent partnership, and I say that from having utilized your services over the years, I feel very good about it, so. Excellent job.
Now, what could have happened with that federal building, what is happening, is a wonderful thing for the City of Wenatchee.
You helped a lot with it.
I'd just like to say all of the, all of the employees of the city that we've dealt with have been great to deal with. Steve especially spearheading it, and Brad Posenjak and everybody that's been part of it, Aaron now, have actually run on it, and I think it's a great win-win.
All right, so six motions. Should we start with number one, see if we can crank these out?
Your Honor, I move the city council approve the proposed Localtel Federal Building Condominium declarations to satisfy the contingencies of the real estate purchase and sale agreement and to further appoint the mayor as the director representing the city's units.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Kulas, to approve the proposed Localtel condominium declarations, satisfy the contingencies of the real estate purchase and sale agreement, and appoint the mayor as the director representing the city. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the management agreement between the City of Wenatchee, a municipal corporation, and Localtel Federal Building LLC, Localtel Federal Building Condominium Association, and Computer Five, Inc.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the management agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Localtel Federal Building LLC, Localtel Federal Building Condominium Association, and Computer Five, Inc. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the construction agreement between Localtel Federal Building LLC, the City of Wenatchee, and Localtel Federal Building Condominium Owners Association.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on the construction agreement between Localtel Federal Building LLC and the City of Wenatchee and the Condominium Association. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the prior rights of negotiation between the city and Localtel Federal Building LLC.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to sign the right of negotiation between the city and Localtel Federal Building LLC. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the addendum to the real estate purchase and sales agreement between the city and Localtel Federal Building LLC, establishing the post-closing obligation of the city to secure an access permit off of Shalane Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign the addendum to the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city and Localtel Federal Building LLC, establishing the post-closing obligation to secure access off of Shalane Avenue. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign an addendum to the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city and Localtel Federal Building LLC, extending the closing date to June 15th of 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to sign an addendum to the purchase and sell agreement to extend the closing date to June 15th. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's take a little five-minute break, and we'll re-adjourn in five minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
I know, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm.
All right, let's get back at it.
Get back at it, let's get this done, get it done.
Get it done. So it's okay with the council, I think, instead of going to the public hearing, we'll do items I and J next, and then we'll do the public hearing. So item I is regarding Viewdale SS 1701. Who's doing the Viewdale?
Do we, do we have somebody here for the public hearing?
I or J?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just our staff. So we're gonna do the View, I've got it as item I, it's the Viewdale.
I have that as item H.
I know, but H is the public hearing item.
Oh, I see, okay.
We'll do I and J, we'll do I and J.
I and J, this, this one should be I.
Yeah, then we'll do the public hearing.
Just to keep it confusing, right?
We're gonna do I and J?
So we're gonna do the Viewdale.
Viewdale is I.
This is I.
This is I.
And this is J.
This is H.
Sorry.
It's I.
It's all right.
And then the other one's J.
Okay.
We have, we have a scribbler's error.
All right, go ahead, Gary. Are you doing this one?
I, I'm gonna try and do this one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. I'm Gary Owen, City Engineer. On behalf of staff, we're sorry to throw this one on the agenda at the last minute and potentially create some confusion. I'm less sorry than Stephen is back there, I hope, but maybe more sorry than Rob is over here. This is, I know, I'll probably get chastised by Councilmember Kulas over here. We, this is a, this is a relatively straightforward improvement agreement for a short plat that's happening on the old Viewdale Drive-In property. And the, the partnership that's purchasing and developing that needs to get that plat finalized before they have the money to invest in the public infrastructure being half-street improvements up on Mission Street. So we thought, I think, that we had the ability to approve this administratively through the process, and then we realized that we didn't have that authority. So that's why we're here, is to get the council to authorize the mayor to approve this improvement agreement with the, with the partnership, to allow the, the plat to be finalized and property transactions to take place prior to the curb gutter sidewalk and street and lighting improvement, sewer, all that stuff to take place, which is fine because the improvements aren't going to get built out there and really be needed until the building comes anyhow in the future.
So in essence, we're getting the short plat finalized so that Catholic family can purchase the dirt, so they can get started on the things they need to do to get the grants to get the housing built? Right? That's kind of the plan for this?
Yeah, and I think all this is in the interest of our comprehensive plan and, and what we want to get done for housing in the city, so.
We've had discussions about this before, correct?
Yes, and we've also got a few city dollars in this project. Allison? Hundred grand, seventy grand?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, so.
I don't like we're totally getting blindsided with this.
Yeah.
Do we know what kind of plan they have for how much housing?
Yeah.
It is 56 units, I want to say. Um, homeless, veterans, and then it's a range of three.
Is it gonna be low barriers?
Pay grant money, and then they're still a little bit short, and they've been out sort of working with some of the counties to get some additional housing dollars and...
And some permanent supportive housing dollars, or units also.
Was that a yes on Linda's question?
I was looking over there, so I missed the question.
I didn't hear Linda's question.
Is it low barrier housing? I, I thought.
Oh, yes, the permanent supportive, yes, 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 got it.
Well, it looked like there was a picture here a while back, something came across under stuff, a packet. It looked to me very similar to what was proposed to be built on the, on the Firestone Lot originally, is that?
It's kind of the same group of people, it's Catholic family.
Pictures look kind of like that, that same design and everything kind of looked like, but I don't know if it's the same number of units or not, but.
No, not same number of units, but similar in concept.
Can you tell me why you did not have the, you don't have the authority for the plat, final plat?
Because we still haven't made that adjustment in our code to allow a director of public works potentially, or planning director, to approve those agreements to defer the improvements that are required by the code.
It's to defer the improvements of the code.
Yeah, because the code requires it at the, at the finaling of the plat.
Yeah, okay. So all, anytime there's a plat, a lot of times we'll give them deferred, right? And let guys start doing lots as it builds out. But right now, staff doesn't have the authority to sign them, so they gotta come to you and say, hey, it's with the mayor's sign, does this make sense for the city from the business perspective? Yeah.
That makes sense. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the improvement agreement for the Viewdale short subdivision SS-17-01WE.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza, to authorize the mayor to sign the improvement agreement for the Viewdale short plat, or short subdivision, excuse me, SS 17-01WE. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Allison, Parkside Lease Extension.
Thank you, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. So in the same housing trust fund round where Catholic family got funded for their portion of this project, the Women's Resource Center got turned down for the supportive housing units they were going to build on parcel D that we provided a lease for them for last August. And so the recommendation from... And so, the recommendation from the Housing Trust Fund was that they needed to show control and tenure, and that would strengthen their application from the date of the occupancy of the units. And so, in conferring with Laurel, she is asking for a lease extension on parcel D that would expire December 31st of 2060. Our original term that was in the lease agreement coincided with their lease of that portion of Parkside that they are currently operating. And they, again, apologized for the quick action, but they needed to have this for their Federal Home Loan Bank application that is going in on Tuesday, and then their subsequent application for Housing Trust Fund that comes a couple weeks after. In between council meetings.
You said they got turned down at one point?
They were in the same.
Was it because of this reason?
This was one of, when they did their debrief with Housing Trust Fund, this was one of the factors, yes.
And there's no performance clause in here, though, right? I mean, we don't expect them to sit on it for forty years, but they could.
They could. If you wanted in the amendment for us to put it contingent on the funding of the project, we could do that.
Or maybe just a way of terminating the lease.
Yeah, I think at this point, I mean, they'll do whatever we ask them to do currently, we're trying to get them so they can actually compete and get something. Yeah, if it gets turned down a couple more times, and I feel like they're not doing it, I'm sure they'll come back to us and say, well, this isn't working.
So is there a clause in here with mutual agreement, we can terminate the lease?
We actually had a provision that they had to complete their improvements by December 31, 2018.
Oh, there was, okay.
Which now, that may need to be stretched out a little bit.
Yeah, 'cause it's 2020.
If we're going out to 2020.
And that'll cover us for our concerns here?
Yeah, I mean, that's the requirement that they do, and if they don't, then they're in violation of the lease, and we could terminate it.
Yeah, so it gets us out if they don't get stuff built, so.
About five years. So do we need to extend that date from December 31st, 2018 to...
It sounds like they don't plan to do it until 2020, so.
Might extend it to 2021 or 2022?
Twenty-three, five years.
Twenty-three, okay.
So, of 2060?
So, no, we're just talking about the...
Section eight.
Oh, section eight, okay.
The tenants' improvement shall be completed not later than December 31st of 2023.
Perfect, okay.
Or the lease lapses, yeah.
Okay.
Which is fine, that gives them five years to get it built, and if they don't, then come back to us and we can do whatever.
So, I didn't read this, so I'll start off with that. And is the, is there a clause in here that, like, if they sell it, we have to get authorization? We have approval from us, or?
There is assignment. Typically, we have an assignment clause.
Yeah, there's section 16, this lease cannot be assigned, transferred, encumbered, sublet, blah, 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 without our consent.
Thank you.
Which is standard.
Yeah, I just... Again, sorry for the lateness on this one again, but just came in.
Okay, so it's a forty-year lease?
Needs to be forty years from their occupancy, which Laurel said would be the spring of 2020, but she requested December 31st of, yeah.
So the term of the lease is fine, it's just the provision in section eight where we're, if you don't get it built by a certain date, the lease goes away, which is fine, yeah, gives us the chance.
Well, the existing term actually needs to be stretched out.
Yes.
That's 2060.
Yes.
So it's only 2041.
It says January 2041, and so we...
The request is...
Twenty-sixty?
December 31st, 2060.
Okay.
Twelve thirty-one.
The clock starts on in 2020, not...
Right.
I've never really been good at math, but it's...
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign a lease amendment for Parkside, extending the term out to forty years. So in section two, that date would be December 31st, 2060. And also in section eight regarding performance, that the last sentence to read, tenants' improvement shall be completed not later than December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulaus, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement with Parkside, extending the term out forty years, with the term ending on subparagraph two at twelve thirty-one, 2060, and on subparagraph eight, that the date would be changed to December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Motion and second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have a public hearing item regarding city titles 10, 11, and 12. So for public hearing items, we will hear from staff, then we'll turn over the public for any comment, and after the public comment, we'll turn it back to the staff for any action they'd be willing to take. Stephen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So again, your planning commission has been very busy over the last several months, looking at a lot of different aspects of the city code. Some items that came from you, the storage standards in the North Wannachee Business District that we workshopped a month or so ago, and other items, as we've looked at the code with them, also amendments to Title 11 for alternative compliance to our street standards, and I'll cover that in a minute. So there are amendments to three sections of the city code in Title 10 zoning, 11 subdivisions, and 12 our environmental protection. So on the first page of the agenda report, I tried to detail out in bullet items those changes. They looked at the definitions of light industry, and in that, we included maintenance and service facilities for motor vehicles, really contrary to the whole idea of what industry is and creating something. So, in that conversation, they've proposed to create a new definition for that, new use chart, location for that, similar to where it was in the light industry, but recognizing it as a separate use. Also, a new artisanal-industry manufacturing use, this would be not light industry, but somewhat less intensive than that, more handcrafted items, where we ran into some issues, and in particular was in the historic entertainment overlay of downtown. We had some artisans in light manufacturing that wanted to occupy some of our downtown spaces, and those uses weren't allowed because it would fall under that definition or category of light industry. And so in conversations with the planning commission, and we looked at something that's a little bit less intensive, some performance standards relating specifically to noise, vibration, fumes, those kinds of things, to keep that impact low, but still allowing some of those lighter manufacturing, handcrafted items to be cited in our downtown. Whether they have a retail storefront or not, isn't required, but that is addressed in those standards. They also looked at the definition of school. We've been struggling with our definition, it's a very broad definition, allow, it includes all special instructional services, and that extended out to tutoring facilities, and became somewhat problematic. And so the planning commission looked at narrowing that definition to being specific to recognizing a school, so that'd be elementary, kindergarten, elementary, middle school, high school, or any other special institute of learning that's recognized by the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. And so that would narrowly define that to more of a school facility where the students are working towards some form of a diploma in that K through 12, where we have definition for higher education. And so, that also, looking at personal services definition, that's where we fit our tutoring services, that personal services definition is uses that are intended to meet personal needs, where we have yoga studios and exercise facilities and similar type uses there. So we felt that that met, the planning commission agreed that those personal services, such as tutoring, would fit into that. And then, in the district use chart in 10.10, so that's kinda where we began to, where are all these uses appropriate? Planning commission took some time in that, and again, as I said, for those passenger transit, motor vehicle component, they looked at the same locations that light industry is allowed, same places it was allowed before, just identifying that. And then identifying those lighter artisanal-industrial manufacturing as a permitted use in our commercial and our industrial zoning districts. And then, as we discussed in our workshop last month, the planning commission spent a significant amount of time looking at the moratorium that you initiated in the North Wannachee Business District north of the Wannachee River, related specifically to outdoor storage. They looked at all of those uses and have proposed some revisions to the city code on those outdoor storage uses. Planning commission also spent some time, going onto page two of the agenda report, looking at fence standards in our commercial zoning districts. They felt very strongly that if someone were to erect a fence in a commercial zoning district, particularly on the front, facing the street, that that not be a, just a simple chain link fence, or something, that they wanted some, that fence to be broken up into some architectural features, so there'd be a stretch of fence with a masonry or wood post or something that would differentiate it from the rest of the fence, so it wouldn't have, as you drive by, you just don't have this long linear fence, you'd have something that's broken up, a little bit more pleasing to the eye in our commercial zoning districts, and that only, again, those only would apply on fences that face the public right-of-way. The remainder of the property could be enclosed with standard fencing. So those are the changes to propose that the planning commission has recommended to Title 10, prepared ordinance 2018-12 with those amendments. The planning commission also looked at section 11.20020, this is in our street standards component of our subdivision code. You may recall, last year you adopted an interim control ordinance 2017-24 that allowed for the Public Works Director and the City Engineer to work with developers to provide some alternative compliance to our street standards. We were running into some issues where developers had some innovative ideas or needed to exceed, let's, for example, the slope of a road, the city code requires maximum of ten percent. We had a couple of instances where they needed to do a little bit more. Our code is structured in a way that the only way to achieve that was through a variance, and since that was something that was being designed and created, it didn't meet the variance criteria. And so you adopted that interim control, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, a workshop on that item, and they have forwarded a recommendation to you that that alternative section be added as a permanent component to our subdivision code. And again, that would only apply to the subdivision code into the street standards, it wouldn't reach into the zoning code or any other component or portion of the city code. We have variance provisions in Title 10 that would address any of those variance criteria, it would simply be to the streets. And that is in ordinance 2018-13. And the final ordinance that I have for you this evening speaks directly to Title 12, that's our environmental protection section, and there's some minor amendments to the flexible thresholds for categorical exemptions through the State Environmental Policy Act. So essentially, what happened is the city made changes to our flexible threshold, so the State Environmental Policy Act allows local jurisdictions to adopt a flexible threshold of when a SEPA applies and when it doesn't apply. So we set those standards, and then a couple of years later, the Washington Administrative Code changed. And what that did is that all of our references, then, were no longer referencing the right sections, and so we had some disconnect in our code. And so this really, the last amendment in Title 12 under ordinance 2018-14 rectifies that and clarifies what our flexible thresholds are, and then correlates those back directly with the State Environmental Policy Act. A lot of information, again, your planning commission has worked diligently on all of these issues, and all of them come forward to you with a unanimous recommendation from your planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on any of those items.
Any questions for Stephen before we turn over to the public for their comment?
So, in areas of, we'll call it gray, there's a statement that indicates that it needs to be of high-quality distinctive product. Who's the decision on what's high-quality and distinctive? And when there's a disagreement about that, what's the resolution process?
For the fence section?
This is on Exhibit A, 10.08, definitions on, I have no idea what page it is, 120 of our packet two, talks about the artisanal-industry manufacturing, means a person or company that makes a high-quality distinctive product. And that can be interpreted by a lot of people a lot of different ways.
I think, yeah, the intent there was that it was not a mass-produced...
They're not making widgets for making wallets. More of a... Yeah.
But who makes that decision of what fits that category? And when there's a dispute about it, how, what's the process there for covering that dispute? Is that something they would go to the planning commission on and bring?
Court? No, it'd be the administrator.
It could be the hearing examiner, and then Superior Court.
We could have an administrative interpretation by our code administrator, which would be the planning director. If they don't like that, it would go to the hearing examiner.
So there is a method set up.
Yes, we have a process in the code in which they could request an interpretation of that.
Thank you.
Jim?
Given the interim agreement on giving developers some flexibility to do some stuff, since we put that in there, this is intended to make it permanent, but up to this point, has that been used much or not? Is it working?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that. Yes, we've used it actually three times in developments. The first one is at the end of Springwater at Pine Shadow Development, they have a road section that they were looking at exceeding the standard ten percent to get up to those, and the fire marshal and the city engineer both reviewed that and made a determination that fire trucks could still get up that 12% grade, and so that was an instance that we used, this component. Beacons Field, again, Springwater, they're looking at some alternative designs in their streets, and so they applied under this code as well to look at some alternatives from our standards for curb radiuses on streets. And then, Broadview on the Canal 2 project, in Broadview, they, looking at the private road and narrowing the right-of-way, not the drive surface, but the required amount of right-of-way. So it actually has been very helpful in looking at some of these more difficult sites to develop, and then developers who want to do something a little bit different than the city code allows. So, not always being used, but since December, we've looked at it three times, so it's been useful.
Good, that, that. And the other question I had was on the, on the, the storage, revisions of the storage thing, now that, in codification of that, that just applies to the old station area, that does not apply to the rest of the Central Business District or Central Business District South, it only applies to the north?
That's correct. So, yeah, on the use chart, there are some subscript numbers that specifically identify those to the North Wannachee Business District north of the Wannachee River.
I guess, it seemed to me, why would we just do one of those business districts and not the rest of them?
The uniformity, I mean, if it's necessary, needed, and applicable in one place, why isn't it applicable in another place?
So, the planning commission did talk about that briefly, they did fall back on the direction from you on looking specifically at the North Wannachee Business District. However, this is a public hearing, and so this is certainly within your ability this evening to make a change to that, to remove those, that section in the subscript and just make it applicable to the North Wannachee Business District.
I think specifically with respect to the property that this discussion took place on, which is in the old station retail area and one of the retail shops, that's a big empty store. empty store, I can't tell you any of it, was planning on doing something like that out of that. And we felt it didn't fit in the retail area that that was developing. So this, you know, we looked at that whole Old Station area, something that really wasn't the right spot for that sort of. And so I think this was specific to the Old Station area, and as it develops and doesn't really pertain to other parts. There are other sorts of storage units that are being built in other places in the Central Business District in this side of the river that I don't think we thought they were fine in the area where they were doing them. So I think we're trying to thread something through a needle a little bit.
Yeah, like I said, the planning commission did discuss whether it should apply to all the North Oneatchu Business District, but as the mayor stated, they did fall back on that original interim, or the moratorium specific to the North Oneatchu Business District. And we did look closely at the Sunny Slope Subarea Plan in relationship to these changes as well.
I think one thing that was also discussed was that the North Oneatchu Corridor Plan, the North Oneatchu Corridor Study right now is undergoing, and design component will be part of that. In fact, I believe there's a design meeting next week. And that, you know, the whole, having that discussion and review of design before moving forward on changes on that corridor, there's some benefit to that as well.
But I do think that it's a good question to raise, because let's say, you know, Office Depot leaves town, and all of a sudden, somebody else wants to purchase the building and make something, you know, storage-like out of it. We're not, we're not applying this to that area.
I agree. If we're gonna have rules, and why have rules for good or bad? Shouldn't they be applied to everybody?
Or that downtown church, you know, there's a huge potential for storage in the downtown area, too.
But you're also trying to build a city downtown, right? So there's certain things we control and certain things we don't control, right? And you gotta pick and choose which ones you want to be in the middle of and which ones you don't, right? Property rights versus building a city. You gotta sort of pick. And we'll turn it over to any members-
I don't think, just to clarify, I'm not against it. I just think we should make it, you know, on a broader base.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe of the planning commission.
You know, one thing that the council can entertain as well is, and you know, should you choose to adopt this for the area north of the river, is to provide further instruction to the planning commission to look at this south of the river, and in conjunction with the North Corridor Study that's currently going on, and look at that at the same time. You know, just an option to-
Let's see if there's any members of the audience which wish to address the council on this particular item, since this is a public hearing. Seeing nobody who is interested in addressing the council, then I will turn it over to their action and/or discussion.
Well, so Glenn, are you saying, take sections at a time is what's going on, or...
I was just suggesting, if you choose to move forward on the item, you know, that the planning commission was directed for this area, if you adopted that, then you could also provide directions to the planning commission that, as they're looking at codes, which we will be with the North Oneatchu Corridor Study, on that, you know, on urban components and design features on that corridor, that we could also look at the same thing we did for Old Station on the storage at the same time. It would be a good fit to consider along with that. It would be easy to do, and it makes sense to look at that together.
You're talking about an option where we adopt what's here, and then ask the planning commission to look at that more broadly going forward?
Yes.
I'm okay with, you know, with this. It's just that it seems to me there should be some uniformity in the way we apply, apply these things, so.
All right. So I guess I would entertain a motion if we had one. And I think that to note, the final ordinance is actually 2018-14, the bottom.
Correct, thank you.
Yes, we're doing 12 and 13, and then 14. Not 12, 13, and 13.
Okay, well, Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to accept the planning commission recommendation and adopt the revisions to the City, Oneatchu City Code in Title 10 by ordinance number 2018-12, the revisions in Title 11 by ordinance 2018-13, and the revisions in Title 12 by ordinance number 2018-14.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to accept the planning commission recommendations and adopt the revisions of Oneatchu City Code in Title 10 by 2018-12, Title 11 by 2018-13, and the revisions in Title 12 by 28-14. Discussion?
Your Honor, I, for, so that's on our record, so there's no potential for misunderstanding, knowing how things can be misconstrued and misunderstood. The proposed amendments to 11.20.02013D4 that relate to items that might be, I think the term's conflict, which makes me really nervous, but measures, we talked about the street standards, being able to use alternatives for the street standards, and they discussed the grades. The reason I bring this up is that I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is in Title 11 of the city code, which deals with subdivisions. It's not in Title 2, which deals with building and fire codes. And I only raised that because the state law does not allow cities and counties to lessen standards that are in the state building code. You can amend the state building code and make things more stringent, but you cannot reduce them without, well, you can't reduce them, and you can't make amendments. And the only reason I bring that up is I wouldn't want somebody to come in and say, the fire code, as it relates to a building, see, the council said that you could propose alternatives, because you cannot. This section is strictly relating to subdivisions and street standards. Just be sure that we all understand that.
Clarification. All right, can you enter discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And you might just ask the planning commission to look at that one more time, and I'll talk to you off, off-camera about a few things related to this. Mayor's report.
Thank you.
I think the only thing I will really add is the rumor mill is that the infra grants are supposed to be announced on Wednesday. That's the rumor mill floating amongst the administration in Washington, DC. So we will know on Wednesday whether we got $2 or $150 million or nothing. Not even sure how we're gonna hear. And I'm hoping my phone rings with an unknown number. That's usually one of those ones that's-
I get a tweet.
Allison, anything else in the mayor's office? I know we've been just hugely busy on lots of stuff.
We will, I think, you know, time has been spent on building stuff, federal building, Parkside. There will be things coming through for Parkside, so, lots there.
Council members, anything going on on your council stuff that's worthy of note? I did meet with some of the museum folks. Lyle and I met with the museum folks last week, and I'm not sure who else I met with. It was a busy week.
The homeless steering committee met, and you saw a report last week on the low-barrier housing, and we will be meeting again on June 25th to discuss that further.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Enjoy your Memorial Day, enjoy a couple of weeks off. We'll see you on the 8th. When's our next meeting?
12.
14.
14.
14.
14. See you on the 14th.